Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is March 10th, 2016. We're at the district office and this is the Board of Education meeting. At this time, I have a motion to enter Executive Session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of particular person or persons, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, we're now in Executive Session. Thank you again for being patient. At this time, may I have a motion to return to General Session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you very much, we're now back in open session. Move that if I can. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the fine, open and honest change of America and to deliver a model for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no agenda modifications for tonight, so may I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. That brings us to Pride.
Yeah, before I turn it over to Garrett, I'm gonna turn it over to Aviva and then we'll turn it over to Garrett, how's that?
Okay. Okay, I'm sure you've noticed, our wonderful social workers in their t-shirts, it is Social Workers Month, I'm sure there's a longer title for that. But we're thrilled to have them here and I know they have a few words for us, so please step up to the podium.
Make sure you introduce yourselves, too.
Good evening. Celebrated each March, National Professional Social Work Month is an opportunity for social workers around the country to turn the spotlight on our profession and highlight the important contributions that we make. Interestingly, this week, March 6th through 12th, is National School Social Worker Month, so the timing was perfect. I'd like to introduce my colleagues, all of our district's social workers, and then we'll say a few words about the work that we do in the district.
So I'm Aaron Berrios, a social worker at FDR and was formerly at Havelin, so I'm happy to be here. And at the end, we'll have some testimonies of some letters that some of our students have written about the work they've done with us, as well as some of samples of the work that we've been working on recently, so.
Maureen Russo, a social worker at Havelin Middle School.
Mandy LaLuna, a social worker at Roosevelt High School.
And I'm Meredith McLean, I'm the social worker at Netherwood Elementary School, as well as North Park Elementary School, and Marla will be our speaker for us today.
And I'm Marla Sherman, social worker at Violet Avenue in Ralph Or Smith. Whether we be at the elementary or secondary levels, as school social workers, we strive to be the change, to help our students and families utilize their strengths and grow to be more successful. Our days as school social workers are unpredictable and varied, as we aim to meet the social and emotional needs of our students, which are proven barriers to student learning. We work with our diverse group of students, each beautiful in their own way. We may start off our day meeting a crying child off the bus. Providing comfort and refocus, we assess the cause of their distress, could it be academic-related, could it be bullying, or something else, and help develop a plan for the future. Next, we collaborate with a teacher or administrator to address a social, emotional, or behavioral concern. That might be attendance, school performance, or related to social skills, academic progression, or familial issues. Whatever the specifics, we tailor our assessments and interventions to each individual student and their family's needs. For example, with chronic absenteeism, we may assist in identifying the issues, provide resources, and make home visits to help the student be more successful. On most days, we collaborate with local mental health clinics, providers, and other outside agencies to help students and families gain assistance and understanding of resources. We maximize availability to community resources and facilitate wraparound services with local agencies. In addition, we provide an important safety net when the family is unable to access outside mental health services. Within the school walls, we continually address social, emotional, and behavioral concerns. We work closely with staff to develop functional behavioral assessments. We consult with and provide support to teachers and staff to help students develop coping and management strategies. We are routinely active in crisis intervention and provide solution-focused interventions, including individual and group counseling, social skills groups and training, classroom presentations, outside referrals, parent education, and intense support for the social and emotional learning classes. Our day is certainly never boring. In these few minutes, we can't describe everything we do, but hope to leave you with a sampling of ways in which we help our students and their families. In addition, this past fall, we took the concepts of mindfulness movement in children and put together a PowerPoint presentation full of research-based techniques that benefit students of all ages. We have shared this with our colleagues and will distribute it to you when we're done here in a few moments. We are licensed clinical social workers and hold permanent certification as school social workers through the New York State Department of Education. School social workers are the only people personnel services profession that requires licensing in addition to a teaching certification. This licensing allows us to provide reimbursable services to the district. As school social workers, we play a critical role in our educational system. Our training and unique perspective supports compliance with federal and New York State educational mandates throughout school-wide responses to school attendance, safety planning, bullying, social-emotional learning, and response to intervention. We provide effective and vital support services by maximizing school-based and community resources. In closing, it is our privilege to serve the students and families of the Hyde Park Central School District and provide support to our colleagues and administrators. We have built relationships with our families, colleagues, and community, establishing trust over time. We enhance our district's ability to meet our academic mission by maintaining and enhancing the mental, social, emotional, behavioral, and cognitive functioning of our students. We understand academic structures, services, and student needs, as well as the social, emotional, and mental health needs of the students, families, and sometimes staff. We provide counseling and crisis intervention when needed, not based on insurance allowances and regulations. In addition, our services as licensed clinical social workers allow the district to bill for third-party reimbursement. We work collaboratively and provide consultation and coordinated interventions designed to keep children in school. Each day, we work together to help our students and their families become even more successful. We truly enjoy being part of the change in their lives, and we truly appreciate letting us share with you today and share some of the handouts we have for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, very well done, and we are happy to have you here to celebrate National School Social Worker Week, so thank you, that was very informative, I think, for a lot of people.
I'd like to also thank you for speaking here tonight. I think it's important for us to learn what goes on in our district, how it is done, and who the people are that are doing it, so thank you very much for coming.
Okay, so Garrett, you're up.
Excellent. Oh, even better. Here we go. So, to touch upon what Mr. Heeter said earlier about the play, or the musical that we have going on right now at FDR, we have one tomorrow at 7:00 PM, I mean, excuse me, we have, on Friday and Saturday, we have performances at 7:00 PM, and then on Sunday as well, we have, the musical's being done again at 2:00 PM, so I'd encourage anyone that can go out to go and see it, I saw a snippet of it today, I'd say it was pretty extraordinary, Mary Poppins' "Goes Up in the Air," which is something new that they added this year, which is exciting. I know I'll be making a point on making it to one of these performances. Now, to move over to athletics, I know our gymnastics girls team all competed very competitively at the state competition, which is an honor in making it there. Rhett Burns placed 38th in swimming in the 200 free. And for bowling, our girls team placed 11th, and our boys team 9th in the bowling state championship. And Megan Kosher, I believe is pronounced, placed 16th individually, and Sean Hubbard placed 8th individually in the state bowling competition. So I'd say that's a pretty successful winter season as far as FDR Athletics goes, and I know currently that spring sports have started up, and it's nice looking outside the high school and you see hundreds of our students out there participating in their respective sports, so hopefully I'll have a lot of good news to bring as the spring season progresses. And I hope it won't take too long, I want to read off the top 20 from this year's class of 2016, I know many of these are my friends and peers, and I think they deserve all the credit that we can give them. So, starting from number 20, working our way back, is Cassidy Janso, Gina Calucio, Megan Jones, Nicole Leroy, Atia Saroya, Zach Schiffer, Katie Johannes, Tess Manning, Ryan C., Kira Jurey, Diala Hadad, Emma Reining, Connor Walsh, Varanir Singh, Alex Basikis, Riley Robinson, Natalia Rabello, Jenna Cicato, and our solid Victorian is Nick Fantini, and our valid Victorian was Dolan Slagel.
Thank you. I'd just like to reinforce the, which I said when I first came in, but for the TV, the musical was fabulous, it was just, it's, in addition to Mary Poppins floating around, we had Burt doing somersaults on the roof and on the wire, and I guess the crazy substitute nanny getting spun around, it was just, and you can't see the wires, they did the kite thing, where you actually saw the kite going up and down, and that was also on a wire. The other thing to add is that the seniors' lunch and afterwards was really, really well-done, and kudos to the food services department who put it on, the food was great, the, I can say, I guess I can't say old folks, I'm one, but the people there, the retirees and what, really, they just were just so complimentary about the musical and about the food and about what it meant for the community to be able to have these kinds of activities, so it was a great day, it really was, okay.
Okay, I just have one last piece. We were informed very recently that Jennifer Parker, Jen Parker, math teacher at FDR High School, was identified through the Dutchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce as one of the 40 Under 40 awards, and those go to professionals in the community, there's 40 given every year, they have to be under 40, and I'm not sure who nominated her, I maybe can poke around, but...
Her husband.
Her husband, okay, excellent, thank you. I'm on the Chamber Foundation Board, not affiliated with selecting 40 Under 40, but I'm very familiar with the process, and the competition is very stiff, so I'm sure that, well, first of all, yes, we think it's well-deserving, but I'm sure that her application spoke for itself, it isn't an easy process, there will be a ceremony, usually they have it at the civic center where they recognize the 40 Under 40, and I'll definitely be there to support Jennifer Parker.
Did we have a meeting since the Wizards game? No?
No, oh, right, yeah, no.
So there was, and a fundraiser at the high school, the Harlem Wizards came to play the Bad Apples. It was fun, it was fun, I wouldn't call it basketball, but it was entertaining. I get to get on the court, I'm not even sure if I got to go over the half-court line because they kept stealing the ball, I don't know, you know, it was like, but there was, the kids had fun, the activities that they sponsored were great, they did come beforehand and go to schools and talk to children about staying in school, about being good, so, I mean, there was a real benefit to this, as well as raise a lot of money, so that was a good thing for the class, so.
Yeah, what was amazing to me is that the young man that spoke, I guess he's not that young, but he's certainly not as old as us, the guy that spoke for the Harlem Wizards, pointed out the fact that they do this on a fairly regular basis year-round, and they, in the past year, just the past year, had raised $2 million for the organizations that they came and performed for.
Yeah, they actually have three, they have three teams, they, 'cause I asked, they do 248 games a year.
A year.
A year, 248.
And they did their flying without wires.
Yes, they did.
Okay, and two other events, I feel like I just wrote it all in the, one was the Havelin Middle School Community Night, it was the second one that they've done, a couple of hundred people showed up, they changed the format a little bit, it looked much more like a, kind of like a vendor show, pretty much any and every activity at Havelin Middle School had a booth, the families that come get to enjoy a dinner with a small chamber orchestra playing, the food is donated by the community, specifically Capolas donates the sauce, and other agencies help to donate the food, so...
And the staff serves.
The staff serves, so it was, this was the second year in a row that they've done that, and there are workshops that people can go to, a menu of, you know, several different options.
Right, I was there, and I think this should be a model for other schools to follow, it was just well-done. I did attend one of the workshops just to see what it was like, because I was interested in the literacy one, so it, I think it was very well-received, and it had something for everybody. The string orchestra played, it was kind of nice while they were eating, and it was like that close, you know, you were right there eating and they were there playing, and it was actually very, very good, so. I, I think Eric will do this for now on, but I would hope that perhaps elementary schools might consider.
The format that he, yeah.
The format, yes, it was very, very nice.
Yep, and this was spearheaded by Eric and his building leadership team. Last but not least, and I'm sure I've missed some things, but last Friday night was the District STEM Fair, directed by Kim Niesel, our Director of Math and Science, and this year again, it was a very successful event, the format changed a little, she increased the number of hands-on stations for students, and she managed to get 35 high school students to volunteer their time on a Friday night to help families and children with the stations. It was a lot of fun, a lot of great exposure to concepts of science, careers in science, just experimentation, it was really good, it was, each year it gets better and better, so. And we will be announcing, she did share with us the science fair winner, so we'll make sure we recognize them at the next board meeting.
Okay.
And Garrett, we do bring in the top 20, too, so we'll give them a...
Yeah, yeah, they'll be here. Anybody else have any pride that good things happen, you know? I would say that a lot of good stuff happened, my brain stopped, you know?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, all right.
I was happy Cora prompted me, because there's so, just so much going on.
So we're at the, you have anything else for the superintendent's report?
Uh, no, just a reminder that on Monday, here in district office, Corin, I will hold an informational session on changes in the grades 3 through 8 New York State assessments, so all are welcome, we've sent out flyers, we'll send another reminder tomorrow and put it on the Facebook and the website.
Okay, I guess I'll have to go with a senior moment there, when I just kind of blanked out, so, don't say a word. Okay.
You did get a free meal out of it, though, right?
No, no, I didn't eat, I went around talking to everybody.
Oh, I see, okay.
I, you know, you know, I talk too much, that's what I did, that's my thing. So, that moves us on to one of our favorite yearly presentations on the bus proposition proposal. It's only because I like seeing that rusty bus every time, every year.
It's not there.
It's not there?
That breaks tradition.
There you go. Good evening, folks. Again, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the board and the community for supporting this bus replacement plan. We've done a really good job over the 19 years, and hopefully we can continue to do that, and we'll get right into the presentation now.
Uh-oh, here come the big guns now.
It's close.
I know Bobby was in here working on this all day, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
Wait, George, you put one of the new buses on the front.
Well, I was gonna say, we're almost gonna get rusty, this one's been here a while. Yeah, go ahead, yep. Okay, you gotta keep that going, just rolls in, Linda. You can put them all up and I'll just do it. Okay, we've got 100, there's a whole bunch more. Okay, there's 134 staff there now, the additional staff there is because of the temporary monitors we needed for the new UPK program. We have 104 buses and we travel 71 square miles a day within the district. We have 4,122 public-private parochial, special ed, and now we add the pre-K students this We have 4,974 available seats in the fleet. We go to 53 schools, that's up, we were like 47, I believe, last year, and we had three more, six more locations added this year, and we transport students to 13 work sites on a daily basis all through, all through the morning. We have 84 bus routes that are assigned, 352 runs daily, and we do approximately 7,000 miles a day. And we, this year, last year, we did 627 sport and field trips, and we traveled 37,833 miles, and that included just September through June, that's not anything that we did in the summer. And we traveled approximately 1.4 million miles last year, and what that's done, that's an increase again for us, but that's due to the additional evening programs that we have at the elementary level, and then, thank you, and then the other, the summer program that was added last year, so that increased our mileage, and we're probably going to see another increase again this year, thanks to my friend Cora. So, and then we'll go through the transportation mandates. Statutory, we have to pick up students 15-mile radius for non-public schools, 50-mile maximum radius for transporting special-needs kids, we're doing that now with about four that are out of district that we're contracting through the Boshe's Consortium. Maximum radius for transporting homeless students to their school of origin, we've got a lot of them, that's up again this year. The school bus equipment, they make us put the seatbelts on, but again, there's no law that they have to wear it, and there's things like that that they make us do with these buses when they're built, but we don't use them. Why a replacement program? Obviously, it's student safety, that's what we're all here for, that's what our department's here for. SED and DOT recommendation that we replace buses on a regular basis, the rust issues, and they're not going away anytime soon. The useful life of a bus is approximately 10 years, after 10 years, eight to 10 years, you start spending money on the engines, on the bodies, it's just, it's just what they're, that's the way they're built. Keeping in mind that our program is 12 years, our replacement plan is 12 years, so we're replacing every 12 years. We can keep them going for that two years, we are spending some money, but, you know, it works. Then obviously newer buses improves the service to students, and again, goes back to the safety piece, and then avoid spending good money on bad, and I say this every year, we, if our car starts acting up and we're spending lots of money and it's spending a lot of time in the shop, eventually we get another car, we just, it's just not worth sinking good money into bad. This one's probably right up Linda's alley, smaller increases to the annual debt service. We used to go like this with our debt service, some years we had two buses on, some years nine, some years five, and it was going like this. Now our replacement's staying somewhere in the nine to seven, that's where we're at right now per year, and that's what part of this plan adjustment was to do, was to get it to that, so as long as we stay within that plan, we're gonna see the debt service staying pretty flat. The state aid for bus purchases this year is 54.9, that's down a little bit from what we had last year, and with a replacement plan, it allows mechanics to do, spend more time on the preventative maintenance, the daily repairs, and DOT inspection work. And I've written an updated plan for calculated purchasing decisions, we update this plan every year, we look at it, what do we need to do, we've changed it, you might see some buses that were up there last year, we decided to keep, and from when we did the presentation, we had some problems with other vehicles that weren't worth sinking the money in for the last couple of years, so we rotated it out, so you might see something that, oh, that was up there last year. We still replaced buses, but we had to switch it out, it just made more sense not to sink that kind of money into it. Over the last couple of years, I've had some questions about LP gas, propane, so this year I decided to take a look at it, not a real, I didn't really dig, 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 but I did get a lot of information, and what I did is I come up with a cost comparison. And in this cost comparison, we used our vendor who deals with both diesel and propane, so they have all that information there, we used a couple of school districts up north that they deal with, with propane gas, and we used the parts departments from that, from our dealer and from a dealer that, and a school... departments from that, from our dealer and from a dealer that, and a school district that's using the parts, so. And we used some of our information to provide them what we're using on our buses, so that we could come up with some of these cost comparisons, and we'll go through it. The purchase price on the diesel, it's a little bit lower than on the propane. The initial price is a little bit higher on the propane. There's some oil changes here that are involved, and it's pretty interesting. The diesel bus uses nineteen quarts of oil. The propane bus uses ten quarts of oil. So you think there's gonna be a little bit of a savings there. What we found out was that there's twenty-four oil changes in the life of a bus. Let me back up a second. We used that, we're gonna keep the bus twelve years, and we used a number of a hundred and forty-four thousand miles. That's what we used for the mileage on the twelve years. That's about twelve thousand a year. So there was twenty-four oil changes on the diesel, but there was thirty-two on the propane bus. So I mean, we costed all that out, that the propane was a little bit higher in oil change, not a lot of money there. We maintained the DPS, which is a diesel particulate filter. That's something that takes, like, that's taking the soot out of the vehicle, you know, so that it's not blowing that soot out there. That's a simple way to say what that is. So the maintenance on that, and there's a couple of things, and I just wanted to speak to the maintenance of it. We have to clean that every thirty months or so. There's an expense to that on the diesel now. We have to do that like five times. We have to clean that in the life of that bus. There's one time that we may have to bake it, which is they take that whole filter, they take it away, they bake it if they can, and then they bring it back to us, we put it back in the bus. Then the next piece is that we may have to replace that one time, one time in the life of that bus in the twelve years. So when you do all of that, it comes up to thirty-eight, forty as an estimate, and obviously in the propane bus, there's no cost there because it doesn't apply. So the replace, we have to replace the exhaust on a diesel bus, we're figuring one time in the life of that vehicle. And on the propane, it's a little bit more. It's four times over the life of the vehicle, is what was what we were, the information we were given. So that comes up to that sixty-four hundred. So over the twelve years, before we include fuel now, that's pre-fuel, it's a hundred and sixteen thousand three fifty for the diesel and one twenty-three, seven eighty-eight, seventy-five for the propane. So it's about eighty-one cents per mile for the diesel and ninety for the propane. That's, those are the numbers we got on that piece. So then we're gonna, now we're gonna try and do the, get the gas involved. And here's where it gets a little bit different, and the propane involved, diesel to propane. So there's our twelve-year without fuel in it up there, the eighty-one and the ninety. Then we're gonna talk about the fuel cost per mile. For the diesel, that is looking like twenty-three cents a mile is what this is gonna cost. And how we came to that was we used a number, since we did this back in probably December, the fuel number is reflecting a dollar fifty-six a gallon. It's a lot lower than that right now. I think today when I looked, diesel was one twenty-three, gas was one twenty-four, and the propane was at like ninety-three. So there was, there's been a drop in all of it, pretty much the same as you were going through. So we took that and we multiplied the miles times the average miles per gallon. Now the diesel bus gets six point nine miles per gallon, approximately. The propane is getting three point seven. So with, when we do those calculations, it comes up with twenty-seven cents per mile for the propane and twenty-three for the diesel. But that doesn't include this governmental credit that you get on the propane. I'll talk about that a little bit. Right now, last year, that was fifty cents a gallon, that reimbursement from the government. Now, this year, in two thousand sixteen, it's down to thirty-six cents. So there's, it's not, doesn't really go with the sales and stuff like we, what we do with our diesel and gasoline. It basically goes with BTUs. That's how they calculate that, the government, when they give us that money. So once you do all of that work, there is a piece on the diesel, again, that's DEF fluid that we have to put in there to assist that system. That cost us about one cent a mile to do over a twelve-year period, and obviously with the propane that's not involved. So that's the cost per miles with them, with them in there. But that's no credit on the, for the propane, that that's out there. So that we've got all of those numbers, and now what we're gonna do is we're gonna put that VTAC credit, they call, in there. We used a fifty cents number on this, but now I know it's a little lower than that. But that's what that's costing now per mile for fuel on that, on that bus. It's fourteen cents on the propane, twenty-three on the diesel. You add them up, that's the difference in the two. So if I go back up here, the advantage over twelve years for the diesel with the first numbers without the fuel, without the fuel credit, is seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars per vehicle. And then with the credit, the savings jumps over to the propane at one thousand four hundred and forty dollars, over twelve-year savings on that vehicle. So that, those are the numbers that we came up with, you know, going through this process, and I could show them to anyone that would like to see them. Some, just some comments about this. You know, we talked about this, and one of the things I was wondering is, do we do this, what is the reason that we want to look at this? Is it because it's green? It's a green fuel? Well, diesel fuel, I think I showed a presentation a few years ago, diesel fuel's pretty green today, too. It doesn't, there's hardly any particulate matter coming out of that tailpipe now or anything. Same with the propane. Is it for savings? It doesn't appear to be a whole lot of savings here. And part of the things that I look at are this, where are we gonna put it? Then we have to get a pro, in order to be eligible for that VTAC credit, you have to have a filling station. You can't have like a truck come in, propane, and then, you know, just fill up all the vehicles that you have with that and then leave. You wouldn't be eligible for the credit, only with, only with having a fuel system. So let me get some of the positives of the propane. It's a better cold weather start. There's no problem starting it in cold weather, whereas the diesel, we have quite, we have issues with starting diesel in the cold. We have to come in a little early, those kind of things. There's a lot less, there's nothing to that engine. All the pollution components are gone now on the propane vehicle. So when you look at the propane engine versus the diesel engine, all the sensors and all those types of things that are on there to make us meet the emissions on the diesel aren't there. So it's a simpler type of engine that, because of that. And then one of the things that it's really nice about it, it's a lot quieter. It's a lot quieter. It's a whole different sound than those diesel engines. So those are the positives I seen. I don't see a whole lot of money out there. One other thing I'll say, out of all the school buses out there in the nation, propane is only six percent is the number that I've been told by, by a, by our vendor. That's out there for propane in the nation. Some of the other things that I said, I talked about, there's no, no space in our facility unless we can get a new facility and find room for that. I'll throw that pitch in there. And then another thing we're gonna have is three fuel types. Now I've got diesel, I got gas. We've got about eight gas vehicles right now because we were having trouble with the vans getting that. Now we're gonna have to put in another tank, another fueling station, which would be the propane. And the other thing that I really think, and my recommendation on this whole piece is, is let's, let's sit tight with what we're doing right now, since the fuel prices have dropped a little bit. I mean, I spent to date, I think I spent a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on fuel through February so far this year, which is, that's pretty amazing for what we've been, after what we've been spending the last few years. So one thing that's coming out there, it'll be available in two thousand seventeen are gasoline big buses. You get the same thing with the, with the no diesel parts for the emission, and it's a little, you know, it'd be an easier swap for us. For example, if we wanted to go to all gas, and I'll just use this as an example, we have one gas tank and two diesel tanks. If we went to gas, we made that decision as a district, and it's a big decision, whether it's propane, whether it's gas, or whether we stay with doing what we're doing. It's a really big decision. But with gas, we could take that gas tank as we, as we, as we got enough buses that that five-thousand-gallon tank wouldn't, wouldn't hold us but a day or two. We could switch to fuel to one of the two, we got two diesel tanks. We could switch to that bigger diesel tank. Now I could have more fuel that way. And then eventually, when we all that, we could put all the gas in the two diesel tanks where they sit now, move the five-thousand diesel tank out front, the five, out front where we'd be using less. So it's an easier swap for the fuel if we had to do it that way and use what we got. The other thing, those fuel tanks aren't that old. What are they, like five years old, seven years old? They're not old, those diesel tanks that we just replaced. So that's just some thoughts on it. And so really, I'm thinking right now, maybe we should just take a look at it, whatever the board chooses to do. But it is something that, it's a big decision. We've got a neighboring district that's jumping right in with both feet. They're gonna order twelve. And I had a conversation with them, and I just, it just has to surprise. If I was gonna do that, I would maybe do that a smaller number maybe to see, but that's where they're going with it. And maybe we can learn some things from that, too, as well. So it just might be a wait-and-see, and I'd really be interested in to see what the gas vehicle's gonna look like. If we could do that, if that's something that's gonna work, that, you know, it comes out and it's gonna be, it's gonna be some bugs in that, obviously. And I don't, I'm not a real proponent of buying a first year that somebody does something. I see Perry shaking his head. That, sometimes that can be dangerous. But, you know, it's just something that we could watch and see where it goes. Again, the LP gas, I just don't see it's gonna be something that's gonna take over this industry, industry like we first thought originally it might. It became a big thing, and, but now with only six percent of the nation to point, at this point, you know, it might be just be a wait-and-see thing right now. And with the easiness of the gas prices right now, that might be a benefit for us, too, that way. So that's where we are with that piece of it. And these are just the piece where I do the replacement of the vehicles. All of those numbers are pretty much where we're at, the fifteen, nineteen, but that twenty-five jumps out at me. That vehicle's thirteen years old. It's been with us a while, obviously, and we've, it's got probably about two hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, and it's really starting to, you know, do it. But that's where we're starting to see it. It's getting that age and the cost per mile's going up. Same thing here with the last two, seventy-four, seventy-five. They're barely that twelve years that we're getting rid of them at here. And they're twenty-seven, twenty-eight cost per mile, so much more than some of these other ones. So that's just a quick look at what we're, what the vehicles we're replacing and, you know, what we've spent on them over the years. That's just where we've been the last couple of years with replacement, staying pretty close together, ten, nine. We're like in that ten to seven. That's where that plan has worked out. We're gonna have some late years where it's seven. It might not be all big buses. There'll be some vans in it, so it's gonna bring that prop number down a little bit. So the recommendation right now is that I got nine sixty-six passenger buses. That's a hundred and eleven, six ninety-one per bus, so it's one million, five thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars, right? That's, for us, a million dollars. We haven't seen that here in Hyde Park. But that, we're gonna be, once we go through the aid piece, we'll see, you know, we'll get that, that gets that down. And the other part that's gonna get that down is the trade-ins. We'll probably get about four thousand dollars per vehicle, so we're, for that, plus what our state aid's gonna be, and that's gonna just bring the number down a little bit, and we'll show you those numbers. So the prop two's, there's the cost, there's the aid that we got back on the fifty-four point nine. So the post-aid cost is four fifty-three, three fifty-four for nine buses. And open it up for questions?
Yeah, George, I noticed the cost per bus is quite a bit higher this year as compared to last year. Do you know the reasoning for that?
There is a good reason for that. The buses that we're getting rid of right now have been nothing but headaches for us, for us. It was, there was a, there was a time when they, we had, we had the group we got rid of last year, all we did was service them and put them back in line. That's all we did with them. We didn't have a lot of, it was before all the emission stuff come on. They were all before emissions.
No, I think you might have misunderstood my question. Last year we purchased nine, same amount, and was quite a bit less cost than what you check this year.
They just go up, whatever CPI and all that kind of stuff that goes up. It's about three thousand dollars a vehicle, approximately.
I think it was more like twenty thousand.
No, no, no. They were about a hundred and eight last year, if I'm not mistaken, Gary, something like that. I can look that up for you.
I was just looking at your sheet.
Yeah, you're saying on the sheet here, you had for fifteen, sixteen, nine purchases, for eighty-five, making that all full-size.
They were all full-size. There was a bunch of vans in there. So that's gonna make that fluctuate. I'm sorry, I did misunderstand your question. So, oops, we don't want that. So, you know, that's, that's the reasoning. I thought you were talking more or less that the bus, the buses themselves had cost per mile was higher, the expense. That's what I thought you were talking about, Gary.
Well, George, I have to say thank you for doing your analysis of propane. I think it's good for us to take a good, hard look at. I'm curious, who, who's buying twelve buses?
A neighbor. Arlington, I believe.
Arlington?
Yes.
Are they running any propane now?
No.
This is their first?
Their first, and they're going right into it.
What other districts in the area and the county are running propane?
Well, I know Red Hook has some, and right now, other than that, they're the only two that I know of in our county, that I'm aware of. And that's kind of why I went up north with our, where our vendor was. I knew that they were doing that work up there. One of the other reasons I didn't take the vendor that, there's a vendor that's really into the propane. And one of the reasons I didn't get involved there was, they're almost more propane than they were diesel. Where our vendor, I thought, was gonna be fair to us because he would have, he doesn't care whether we buy diesel, he doesn't care whether we buy propane. Actually, the salesman would prefer us to buy the propane. He'll get a little better cut on his percentage for selling the vehicles. So they gave it a real cross-the-board flat look at it with us.
Okay.
And that's why we went with them, to do that analysis.
Okay. I will share with you, I had a conversation or an email dialogue with Transportation Director from Red Hook, and it's just, he'd be interested in talking about the numbers a little bit more.
Okay.
Just, I could buy you lunch one day. Come on up to Red Hook.
I would love to. Jeff and I are real close, so.
Yeah, no, I knew that. I know that. And so it'd be interesting just to have an open dialogue and talk a little more about it. I do, I'm firm that I still think it is a good thing to do. The carbon footprint, even though diesel has gotten better, I still think that it's, the propane is a, has a better or a smaller carbon footprint, and it's something that we as a institution need to be doing. We need to be forging that, and the more that technology is purchased, the more economical it'll become for, for all of us in the future.
Mm-hmm. Well, one of the other things I did look at is that, you know, it's not for every district. That's a piece that, that was, you know, that I was looking at. The smaller district, I see that happening there, and that's, see, one of the things, the districts that were involved in the analysis were kind of smaller. So they looked at it that way, and they were, just with what you were saying, Perry, they said the same exact thing, that it's probably a little bit, little bit greener, you know? That's what they're saying. But I do have to say, today's diesel is really green. I don't know if you were here for that presentation, presentation I showed on that a few years ago. And it is a really clean thing. The problem with the diesel, though, right now, is that there's so much that can go wrong. And that's, that's the issue that would, if we could, you know, look at the, looking at the propane's a good thing, and even looking at the gas would be a good thing because it becomes simplified. The whole thing becomes simplified. You get rid of all of that, the pollution stuff, and it's a, it's an easy deal.
Did you see an issue going to gasoline with a problem maintaining the torque requirements?
That's where, that's where they're at right now. They're at, they're at those points right now, looking at it and to see what it, and then what's the gas, the cost per mile gonna be to run that thing, you know, with the gas, to get that power. So that's, that's the other piece, and, you know, our vendor's gonna keep us right in the loop with that. And, you know, we're gonna definitely look at that piece because that's another issue I have with the propane. I drove two different ones, one from two different vendors, and I didn't see the power there either, you know, compared to what our diesels had. So, you know, there's some things they can do with the, to get you some of that power back, and we're gonna try that with our, with our own diesels. We're gonna try to get some of the power. They put it in kind of a saving mode, you know, you set a mode that you're gonna get more miles per gallon. So that's something that you can play with and look at through the Allison, you know, the transmission dealers. So we're gonna look at that this year. If we were fortunate enough to get buses, we're gonna look at that piece to give us some more power. But I didn't think the power was really that, that good, and I took it on one of our hills that we know is, is that way. And I said, wow, that's not, that power's not good. But then I took one of our newer vehicles up there, brand new, and it was, there wasn't a whole, we were a little better, but not a lot. So that's when I started asking those questions about the diesel, so.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
With our declining enrollment, are we looking down the future road to get the smaller buses, or are we gonna keep this at sixty-six?
What we did, when we walked and, we looked at doing that, right, when we would do this. What we did, when we walked and we looked at doing that, right, when we would do this. And when Doug and we were part of that committee, we had a bunch of 66s, we had 72s. Majority of what we're replacing here are 72s. We're going to replace them with 66s. But Doug made a really good point to this. We want to be a little careful when we were doing, going through all of that. We want to be a little careful. We've got to keep some 72s around because certain routes are just so full. And, you know, we're 44 adults. I mean, high school kids are considered adults. So there's only 44 of them to a seat. Whereas the elementary students are 72. So once you do, you start dropping your numbers, you're going to, you got to watch the capacities that way. But we're doing that. Right now, I've got enough 72s in the fleet. We replaced everything that's going this year with 66s. And there's about, out of the nine, I think four of them are 72s. So we're, we're being mindful of that and dropping it. And we can change that seats available next year number that we've been holding on to a little bit.
Anyone else? Thank you, George. I just, could you comment, please, on the closing of Cromellba Road?
I was hoping I'd get out of here before that happened.
Because I think people are really interested in.
Not, no problem, Doug. We've been meeting with the, the county engineer and the project manager for that job. And I met with them again today. And they didn't really give us a whole lot of new information, but we provided them with some. We've been right on this from the day that it started. We started digging into it, the day we got the first notice on it. We've got three families that are going to be right in the middle of, of where that is. One of the families that they're going to, may have to do something with, we talked about it today. We're not really sure where it's going to go yet. They may have to put a little access road in for them to get the kids in a safe spot because that was my concern. We got construction on this end. We got kids going here. There's a group, one, a couple of families that'll be able to get at Matic Drive and they'll be okay. Because the bulk of the work is not going to be near Matic Drive. Most of it's going to be the bridge from Bar out. But as I drove past those residences today, they're kind of right there.
Yeah.
So they're going to, I gave those addresses to, to the contract manager. And he's going to look at that this week, tomorrow or get back to me Monday.
You're talking about the two on the south side with the long driveway?
Yeah, the first one is right by Cardinal, that long driveway there. There's one child. And then there's a two more families up the other way with, with four children involved. One of them, it's all three levels and that makes, we got to make more trips. But, and then the other part that it's doing is we're going to have to do some detours. We use that stretch of Cromellba, that piece there, 106 different times a day that we route, that we know. That, that we found early on. I think I told Greer that, like the, the day of, 106 times we're across that stretch. But we're very fortunate, except for some of us who live in that area, we're going to be using, we're going to use a local detour. Yeah, we're going to use a local detour. That, that's about seven, eight miles, both of them. One of them's going to be Havlin Road to Cream Street, gets us around it. And the other's going to be Cardinal to Rogers, gets us around it. Yeah, that's what I said. One of us.
One of us lives on Rogers. That's, that's true.
But, so that's one of the, and that doesn't really mess us up too bad. And we really got two bus routes that are on that road most of their day, unfortunately. So they're going to be affected. We've identified approximately 32 routes. I can say that, you know, and that's a good number. And we're working on rerouting that now and breaking it all down and finding out what we've got to do and we'll make the changes.
It's going to add time, I assume, the detours, right?
They're about 15 minutes each one.
It's not easy, easy detours.
Yeah, so they're not that long, but the types of road, we just got to take our time on it. So, and one of the things we got to do is we never make a left out of Rogers on Cardinal. We've just outlawed that here forever, since I've been here.
You can't do it, right? Not at a bus.
From Rogers to, on to, no, on to Card.
From Rogers to Cardinal.
From Rogers to Cardinal. It's really bad left. So those buses, we know we're all going to have to go the other way, no matter what. So we're, we're keeping our routes to safety of them, but we're going to, you know, we're going to make those things. Hopefully by the, early next week, we'll have everything done and looked at twice. We've, the first, the first rendition is just about done. Hopefully the second one will get done early next week. And then we can sit with Greer and start putting our heads together to find out what, what we're going to do and how we're going to get the information out to everybody.
When do they think they're going to start construction?
It could go to Kyle.
April 4th is their target date.
Right. And I heard this morning in the locker room at the gym there, where I get, it's where I get my good information, is that they're hoping to be done in time for the start of school.
Yeah. They, I asked that question.
And it's not a guarantee.
I asked that question today. I brought it up originally, the first meeting. I asked today, what is a dead, drop dead deadline that you could tell me whether that's going to open Labor Day weekend or not? And they asked me why. I said, well, I got a ma, a huge mass mailing coming out. And that goes out like the second week of August, third week of August. I don't want to send that mailing based on your, based that it's going to be open. And then you tell me after the mail's all been delivered that it's not. So they've given me an April 1st deadline to let us know whether they'll be open or not. They, they should know by that time, they said.
August 1st?
I mean, yeah, August 1st, not April, August 1st. So hopefully, I'll stay on top of them. I think this construction company, they're very good. They, they were, we were, everybody that was at that meeting was really impressed with them. And the county engineer has been very good too. We've got all kinds of numbers, contact things. We've got all these lists going. So it's very well organized. And this construction company, actually, they did that job down at Marist, the tunnel.
Oh, yeah, that went very well.
And that, they were, they said 10 days and they did it in six.
Yeah, it went really well.
So we got a good contractor just doing the work.
Thank you, George. I apologize to everybody for lengthening this, this presentation. But I really thought it was something the public, especially those of us that live over there, need to know.
Special interest? Special interest, Doug?
Okay. And that brings us to HVAC control project. Elliot.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try to make this one brief to catch us up on the clock there, Mr. Heater.
Good job.
So we wanted to propose some HVAC control work. Before we get into the proposal itself, I wanted to just give everybody a quick background on how most of our heating systems work in our classrooms throughout the district. A basic classroom heating system is provided by a unit ventilator, which has three major components. It has a steam or hot water coil. It's an element that heats up. A fresh air damper that brings in outside air, and a fan motor that blows that air past the coils, either returning air from the room and/or fresh mixed air up through the coils to provide heat to the classroom. So here's some background information on why we are even thinking about this project. The district's school buildings were originally constructed with pneumatic HVAC controls. That's, that's, means they're controlled by air pressure. The building management systems that we currently use were installed as part of an energy performance contract with a company called Amaresco back in 2004. The pneumatic, or the BMS uses pneumatic electric switches to allow for partial system control. So basically what that means is we used to manually add air and remove it from the system. Now we have computers that add air and remove it from the system, but we're still using air at every component in every classroom. The pneumatic infrastructure is now failing throughout the district. We have a lot of rubber and copper lines that are running concrete, that are running up in cinder block walls, places we can't get to, that are leaking air throughout buildings throughout the district. So just a quick diagram on how pneumatics work. We've got air compressors in the boiler rooms. They have valves attached to them, which now we have the pneumatic electric valves that control how much air goes into the line at what time and what zones. The damper actuator, that's what actually controls the flow of steam or hot water into the coils, the dampers that open up for fresh air, and the thermostats that tell them when to open to provide heat to the classrooms. The lines that connect most of this equipment is what we're talking about when we say that there's systemic failures throughout the buildings. So here's an overview of our current conditions. Very few unit ventilators are fully functioning as designed. Many have at least one of three main components disabled. Fresh air dampers are the most commonly disabled unit in these heaters. And that's, that's just a function of necessity. If for some reason the damper got hung up in the open position and it's the dead of winter, classrooms are getting a lot of cold air blowing on them. The mechanics will go in, clip the pneumatic line, jam the louver shut so that we can heat up rooms so that we can have school. I mean, some of this is predicated by logic, but has become an epidemic over time. Pneumatic issues account for most of the system failures in our current heating plants. What happens when the lines start leaking is that the compressors are overworked and they cripple our ability to control our equipment. In speaking to the folks at State Education Department, some of the engineers up there said, you'd be surprised how much electricity you're blowing through with these compressors constantly running to make up air. So on top of the heating loss, you're actually consuming an inordinate amount of electricity as well. Not to mention you're aging the equipment that's constantly cycling on and off. Our BMS controls themselves are obsolete. Their end of useful life is expected within the next three years. That's per our building condition survey. And that three-year number, just to be clear, is because it takes about that long to get a capital product off the ground, given the current backlog at State Education. So when you see three-year items on the BCS, it means we should probably start looking at them right now. The overall effect is that our boilers are working harder than necessary. Some areas are overheating and others not reaching temperature. Excessive fuel is being wasted. So what does that mean for our kids? Well, failing pneumatics and obsolete zone controls prevent rooms from achieving adequate temperature regulation. It also prevents us from bringing fresh air into classrooms. Now here's some statistics that the United States EPA published within the last couple of years. Raising classroom outdoor air ventilation rates can reduce absenteeism by approximately five to 10 absences per thousand students. And just, just to kind of add a little depth to that, we have 3,600 kids in the district. That's about a whole classroom full of kids that may or not, may not be coming to school on a given day throughout the district. That could be potentially mitigated by adding the appropriate amounts of fresh air to classrooms. Classrooms with low ventilation rates could experience an improvement in schoolwork performance by about 8% just by doubling the ventilation rate. Doubling low classroom ventilation rates could improve standardized test scores also by about 10%. So as you'll hear me talk about, as we talk about other maintenance projects and capital projects, it's not just aesthetics. It's not just function. It really does link to student health and performance. I mean, well, everything that we do, we do for kids. And the EPA and the federal government is telling us that the condition of our buildings directly relates to our students' attendance and their performance. So this is what we propose. We would like to purchase and install a Trane Tracer SC controller. This is, by the way, the same unit that's going into Havlin Middle School as part of the current capital project. We want to remove as many of the pneumatic control devices as we can and replace them with direct digital controls. Obviously, it says all. I really want to do all of them. But if for some reason we can't get to all of them now, we want to focus on the classrooms and instructional areas and create a foundation for future capital work where we can eventually phase out all of the pneumatic controls in the district. Our intention is to install wireless based temperature sensors, allowing for individual room control. Again, at Havlin Middle School, you'll see in the two rooms that have already been partially completed that you'll have a digital sensor on the wall that'll give you a readout as to the current temperature and allow the room occupant to set the room temperature set point within a given predetermined range. We would be performing all of this work under New York State OGS contract. There would be no need for bids. If the project is approved, we'd be able to move forward off the state contract with the vendor of our choice, which allows us not just to kind of have some protection in pricing, but it allows the district to specify exactly what equipment we want and what configuration. Our overall intent is to improve indoor air quality and provide a better control of our existing equipment and prolong its useful life. I want to reiterate that the focus of this is classroom air quality and the potential to heat and control classrooms individually, which is something we have not been able to do, even in light of the EPC that was done 12 years ago. So the rationale and cost breakdown. The estimated cost of unit ventilator controls is $3,500 apiece, contrasting the estimated cost of replacement, which would be $8,500 each. So we're looking at just under half, roughly 40% of cost to retrofit versus replace. The total project cost for Roosevelt High School, North Park, Netherwood, Ralph R. Smith and Violet Avenue is 1.1 million. Current cost for the full system replacement, just in Havlin's A and B sections is 3 million, just to give you an idea of scale and scope of work. Duchess Bosse's and East Greenbush are both districts that have done similar project studies and have had very positive results. These upgrades would allow us, again, for individual room control. And we're looking to prolong system lifespan by five to 10 years. So in no way am I saying that this is going to solve our problems for the next 50 years. But knowing that, as our architects told us on the building condition survey, as we learned earlier today when I was up in Albany at the State Education Building, there's an eight-month lead time on getting projects approved. We're looking at two to three years from referendum to actually getting projects completed. So to add five years to our system would allow us to appropriately plan and phase in a formal capital project to provide the long-term solution, but we don't want to fall short on the way there.
And was, unless I just missed it, some of this stuff could re, potentially be repurposed when and if we get to the capital project?
Absolutely. We're, we're actually modeling this out of what we learned in planning our Havlin project that's going on currently. The sooner the capital project gets off the ground, if we do go that route, the more of the replaced equipment could be recycled or upcycled into the next project, yes. And then that's the last bullet there. Just new controls will be capable of expansion and integration into future projects. Well, I was getting there. But the system we have now is obsolete. It's no longer supported by its manufacturer. If any of our existing JACES, it's what the, the computers that control our, our buildings, if any of them die, we have to purchase an upgraded one and have it manually recoded and all the data re-entered because the old language doesn't talk to the new language. So being a little proactive and doing that now on our own would allow this newer system to be digitally upgraded in the future as systems evolve over time, as we know they do. That's correct. And an 18-year EPC, I heard Dan's comment, 18-year performance contract, within 12 years, the equipment is obsolete. And there is an obsolescence clause which insulates the EPC vendor from having to be responsible for the equipment after that point. Pretty much. So with that, any questions?
Anybody have any question?
Yeah, I do. 175 units, that's your, that's all the buildings besides Havlin, right? That's what you have listed.
It's all the buildings besides Havlin and Hyde Park Elementary and District Office. They would not be included.
All the active elementary.
Right, all of your, your active elementaries and high school, correct.
Right. Now, what percentage of them were, do you consider unsatisfactory at this point? Would it be 100%?
To be honest, I haven't found one that is fully functional out of the ones I've inspected.
What do you consider fully functional on a unit?
An operational fresh air damper, blower motor and coil with appropriate pressure from the compressor to the thermostat to the actuator.
I'm just wondering how we got to this critical point now.
Well, I mean, unfortunately, that, some of this background.
Some of this is simple maintenance.
Absolutely. And a lot of this was emergency maintenance compounded over time. It's been going on well before I got here.
I'm not blaming you for this. I know it's before you.
Can't blame me, even if you wanted to.
I see it in my own eyes before you.
But unfortunately, and what happened is.
The trouble is, and what occurred here, I think, is they didn't repair or fix it, just eliminate.
It was a quick get in, get out. Let's get heat in the classroom to get the kids.
Open a window, get some air.
That's it. If the room's overheating.
Which you still can do.
Right. But what was happening. And also, just to put things in perspective, the district did invest a sizable amount of money, over $5 million, into replacing five boiler plants two, three years ago. Because our mechanics were spending a whole lot of time on the boilers. And those are the same guys that would be fixing these unit ventilators. They were also changing filters and chap, traps and all kinds of other maintenance. And sometimes, in the heat of the moment, pardon the pun, they're running in to get a classroom operational so that kids don't lose instructional time. That mentality over 20 years can have adverse effects.
We're fortunate this year because we got a great year.
Correct.
So we're, couldn't have been too many problems out there, obviously. But if it wasn't, if it wasn't, if it was a typical winter, your thoughts is we'd have, we'd have an abundance of problems out there, the way we're operating right now?
I, I appreciate that you think we didn't have any problems this winter. That means my staff was pretty fast at getting them done before the kids got in the building. But we would have had, we certainly would have had more in a bad winter. And my, my intent, and I stand before you simply to say that I don't want to have another Havlin Middle School situation happen to the district. This is something that we have the opportunity to address now before I have to stand before the board in an emergency board meeting and ask for a very large amount of money to help us fix a building that can't be heated.
Well, we're, we're at the point of you presenting this because we have, we're going to end up with a surplus of money this year. That's the bottom line.
That's fair to say.
Yeah, it's bottom line, you know. You, you probably wanted to bring it up in September the year before.
Before that.
So when we, when we go to per unit cost, you got 3,500?
Yes, sir.
What, what does that?
What that does is that replaces the steam valves and the actuators that would control those interior unit ventilator components.
And the van, like a damper control or motor.
Correct, correct. You change the motor controls, you change the fan control, and you'd replace the steam or hot water valve body to allow for DDC control by way of communication.
So that's not considering any coil work or, or scroll cage work, things like that?
No, we would be, there would, there's, there's a little bit of an allowance in that budget number. And that's for, if the actuator doesn't work or the motor's busted or the louver's busted, then we would go in and repair those as needed. then we would go in and repair those as needed. But it makes more sense to do that with a controls conversion than as a simple pneumatic triage, because when I first started this process, I was actually looking to fix the pneumatics. And the budget numbers that I got was tens of 20, $30,000 to maybe fix a couple, because by the time we pay the T and M for them to go through and check each and every unit, there's more value in just replacing those pieces than trying to bring them back to their 1960s status.
Yeah, and it's a unique field now. It's hard to find a skilled person to work on pneumatics.
There's two that I've met in three years when I've been here.
The other thing is, I don't want to take up everybody's time here, but it's a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
If you take that 3,500 times 175, you're up at about 600,000. So there's another 500. Where's that going?
Well, what we'd like to do, and the reason for the budget numbers, again, there is an allowance for mechanical repairs. A lot of stuff doesn't work. There's also the intent to, at the smaller buildings, begin to migrate completely to the tracer system and move away from the current BMS system, which is a TBS, Tridium Niagara R2 system.
And Gary, you're going to hear this in Linda's presentation, but the one thing that has changed since we last discussed this, either with the energy committee or, I guess that was where we discussed it most recently.
Unfortunately, I missed that one.
Right, but even since then, even since that committee meeting, and even since when I shared this with Doug, we learned from Chuck Bastian, our financial advisor, that this does qualify for state aid. And it, yes, so we will get, what's our percentage of aid, 53%?
About 54%.
54%. I was going to say, I'll save the numbers for somebody who can give the accurate ones. But the new information, and Linda will share that, is that we did learn that we can put this in for state aid, which is huge.
That changes the whole game.
It certainly does, doesn't it? Cuts it in half. So I thought I'd share that now, but Linda will get into the financial details later.
I verified that with the director of facilities planning for state education and had a conversation as early as this morning about it, so.
Now, the building condition survey, which you're going to eventually share with the board, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
Are they saying the same thing that you're telling us, that all the unit ventilators are unsatisfactory?
They actually have rated the entire systems overall as, you know, it's hard to say unsatisfactory because they do function. It's limited function, but they function.
Well, there's always that question we've talked before about this.
Right.
Satisfactory, unsatisfactory. You would like to see sometimes things satisfactory, even though you know they're not satisfactory.
Right, and sometimes I have to, you know, draw lines. I mean, if two out of three components of a machine are operational, even in a limited capacity, is that considered unsatisfactory? That's a judgment call. The number that I do hold fast to is the end-of-life estimation, and that three years is a scary number, considering that it's going to be a sizable cost number to replace these systems. In-kind replacements can be manageable. Our neighboring districts have done a lot of that work. But Hyde Park Elementary, if we include that building in the process, has the same system that Havlin has, with the brick duct that has to be completely re-engineered. And any building that has to be re-engineered is going to add significant cost to the project.
They're kind of unique buildings, believe me.
They are very unique buildings.
It's not the standard old-time building.
No, and a lot of our systems.
Like in my old district, I mean, they were older than hell, the buildings, but I mean, we didn't have any brick duct work or any of that crazy stuff.
And here, we have buildings that have had piecemeal additions and modifications.
Those buildings, just the ventilator that stands alone, which in most cases you do here, the ventilator is the source of everything in a space. There's no duct, I mean, you're fresh air ducking, that's about it.
Right, but we also have fin tube radiation, which is not included in that $8,500 number.
Which you should get rid of anyway.
Correct. If you're going to do a unit vent, you're going to do fin tube also, which adds significant costs as well.
Well, you should eliminate the fin tube. That's my opinion.
Well, at Havlin Middle School, part of the engineering was to include it because of the size of the space, the size of the units. There was a deemed necessity for that.
I understand that point, but typical elementary class space.
I'm not qualified to say whether or not we could get away from all of it, but I would hope we could simplify our machinery.
I mean, we should look into that.
Certainly.
Anyone else?
I have just a couple of points. One thing you touched on briefly, I think I saw in here, was indoor air quality.
Yes, sir.
So we have to have, we've got to be not providing enough ventilation in many of these classrooms where we've got outside duct work that's closed, dampers that are closed, blower motors that aren't working. So one of the things I think we have to realize is that this is going to improve that substantially. I assume that we'll be doing some type of testing and balancing as the units are, I don't want to call it recommissioning, because we're not going to quite that extreme, but do you have a line item in for testing and balancing so that we can get dampers set properly and so that we know what kind of airflow's we're getting into these rooms when we're done?
We didn't include a specific third-party vendor to come in and do that work for us.
Okay.
It's part of, you know, that, I guess, rudimentary commissioning, if you want to call it that, would be provided by the installing vendor. So they're going to be providing us test reports to show operation, and we'll be inspecting them physically for proper movement and operation. But to your point, we're not going to be bringing in, like today, 2016's volume of air, but if we can get back to at least the original design intent, which is better than the nothing we're providing in so many spaces.
Well, I guess that's my point, is how will we know that we're getting, you know, what we're getting back to? I guess I would like to see if we're doing this, some testing and balancing results, so that when we get done, we can be able to stand and say, yes, we are now providing this kind of, you know, this airflow. We've got, you know, 28 students in a typical classroom, we should be providing this much air. We've been able to do that. And my other point is, is just, everybody needs to recognize, this is still a Band-Aid. I mean, we are talking about unit ventilators out there that are still very old. I'm a little concerned that the general condition of the existing unit ventilators, you haven't, I mean, you've got some allowance in there for fan motors to be replaced, I assume. Dampers, you're talking about coils that have been in service that long. You start touching those coils and they can start crumbling in your hands. And, you know, if you start replacing coils, you might as well start replacing unit ventilators, so.
The one thing I can be confident about is our coils are sometimes the only thing that does work. I mean, that's what provides heat in the room. And we're going to stay away from them. We're trying to be upstream of that at the control valve, so we're not really disrupting the coil assembly too much. And really being surgical with the installation because of that reason. But you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
I wish I could stand here and say, hey, can I have more money and replace all the unit ventilators?
But the other side of it is that we need to be thinking about this, because, you know, he's saying, you know, five to 10 years, it'll come very quickly, and all of a sudden we'll be in a position where we've got a bigger capital project that needs to be done for replacement of these units.
Just a thought, going back to, we were looking at developing the work at Havlin, and I, we had mentioned about, why don't we just recondition the air handlers? But it was brought up that they weren't up to standard on airflow? Now, how are we getting away with just maintaining the airflow in these and getting aid on these? We're not going to increase.
Correct.
It's probably below the standard now, these old units.
Current standards, certain way.
Current actual standards put us at greater fresh air makeup air, that's correct. In speaking to the director of facilities planning, though, we're not changing the mechanical function as far as, we're not changing how air moves, we're not changing how air's warmed, we're just changing how it turns on.
Well, you didn't do that with the air handlers either.
No, we didn't, but because the air handlers themselves were failing, the hydronic infrastructure was failing as the part of that system, the systemic redesign called for a full upgrade and full code compliance.
Anyone else? Thank you, Elliot.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Elliot.
That brings us to 6.4. Budget.
Good evening. So this is the best presentation, the budget presentation. Tonight, we're going to talk about the component budget or the three-part budget. Before we get to that, I just want to talk about the changes that we've had in our budget since the preliminary budget presentation in February. As you can see here, the biggest change is the 1.1 million dollar project that Elliot just talked about. I currently have that in the equipment line. Originally, we were intending to pay that through general fund, but since we've talked to Chuck at Bernie Donegan's office and realized we could receive aid on it, we will be moving that down to the transfer to other funds. We'll be transferring that money to the capital projects fund, and we'll be going through SED for the approval so we can earn the building aid.
And just on that note, we have had a lot of communication with the office of facilities planning, and we're very confident that this will go through very quickly.
Yeah, I.
Carl, Elliot was just talking with Carl Thurno today. The approval process for, we're pretty much guaranteed that if we go ahead with this, we won't be looking at that six-month lead time, it'll be more like four to six weeks.
That's correct. That was, the scope of the conversation today was to figure that out.
So we have to wait for their approval, official approval, before you can start your work, right?
Yes.
Before we can start physical work in the buildings.
But we can start submitting paperwork to SED the day after the budget vote, if it passes. So now, our total budget is 90,637,569. That's just a 1.1 million dollar increase. You can see another small change of a dollar. That's because when I entered the tax cap information to the New York State Controller's website, there was a rounding difference between my calculation and theirs, and it came through as a dollar more. So here we have the budget-to-budget comparison. Our budget increase is $2,106,114. That's a 2.38% increase over last year's budget. The significant change is, we did talk about during the last presentation, but you can see in the Bosse's contractual and supply line, we have a decrease of 7%. That's because we adjusted the special ed Bosse's line to be more accurate with what we're actually spending. We also have a change in the transfer to other funds of $100,000. That's that one-time cash capital project. We will receive aid on that, too. During the last presentation, we didn't know what we'd be doing, but we've since identified that project is to repair it for the FDR elevator. In the final budget presentation, the 1.1 million dollars will also be reflected there, but you can see that it's in the line right above currently in the equipment code. And then I also want to point out something else. If you can see, the last two lines under expenditures, the debt service, I guess it's just totally in the debt service payments, the change is 2,852. That's the work that Chuck's office does for us, and he's already calculated the effect of the new buses in that. So we actually have a decrease in our debt service payments next year, including the bus bands we'll have for the buses that George proposed that we add to the proposition. Everything down below is the same. We're increasing the fund balance appropriation to account for the 1.1 million dollar project. Before I go on, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, starting with your preliminary budget, you had an increase of 0.22%.
The 0.22% is in the taxes, and that's the same. We're not changing the tax levy for the 1.1 million dollar project.
Okay, no change at all?
Nope. The 1.1 million dollar project is funded totally with current year's fund balance. It won't come from next year's budget, and it won't affect.
You're just moving that money.
The levy, right. And it won't be, it's a one-time budget request. We won't request the 1.1 million dollars again in 1718. Did anybody else have questions? Sorry about this slide. So here we have the actual component budget. The budget is comprised of three components, which is program, admin and capital. The program costs are 76.71% of our total budget. Program costs include teacher salaries and benefits. There's, we also have the teaching supplies, transportation, the operation expenses for transportation. We have instructional library costs, they're all in that code. The administrative costs are 9.41% of our total budget. That's the salary and benefits for administrators, the board of education expenses. And then in capital, that's mostly debt service, the purchase of the new buses and the facility and operations costs. That's 3.88% of our total budget. I have the detail of the three-part budget following, but would anybody like to talk about the breakdown before we move on? Nope. Oh, this slide here is actually just a comparison of the recent years. It shows the three-part budget, the budgets as a total percent of the total budget for each year. I like this slide because it shows how most of our budget is going to program costs. You can see, we're always above that 75% mark. Now, this slide shows the program expense categories. It's the total breakdown of all the categories that make up the program budget. It's this year's budget compared to last year. As I said earlier, we have a 76.71% increase, or I'm sorry, it's a 76.71% total of the total budget. The students with disabilities line, which is the third line down, shows the change in Bosse's. That's why there's a decrease there. We have another significant change in the extracurricular activities. Those are the five co-curricular stipends that we're adding. We talked about that during the last presentation. And then in athletics, we have an increase of 8.11%. That's because we're adding the budget for equipment back to that code. They haven't had equipment since 2012. So before I move on, are there any questions about this budget?
Yeah, what is that reducing in the school library?
There's a librarian that's retiring at the end of the year, and we budgeted for her replacement at a lower step than she's currently earning. Other questions? Here we have the administrative budget with all its categories. The biggest change here is in the finance line. The business office contractual line had historically been overbudgeted, so we changed that to be more in line with what we actually expect to spend next year. So the total here is 9.41% of the total budget. Are we good with this slide? And finally, here we have the capital, the capital budget, which is 13.88% of the total. You can see that I do have the 1.1 million dollar change under maintenance of plant that will move down to transfer to capital projects, so it won't affect the three-part component budget, because it's still part of capital. And here, I also changed the assessments on school property to be more in line with what we'll spend. That's actually the water bills. A few years ago, we were paying a lot more for water, but then we discovered a pipe that was broken at Havlin, and when that was fixed, the budget was never adjusted for that. And then again, the $100,000 transfer to capital project is the FDR elevator repair. That's why that code is jumping to 43.3%. Does anybody have any questions about the capital component? This slide is the same slide that we presented in the preliminary budget. It's the budgetary additions. The only thing that's new here is the change in the heating controls from pneumatic to digital. Like I said, that's currently under equipment, but it will move down to transfer to other funds. In the preliminary budget, we didn't have this broken down between the three parts, but I did that for this presentation. There are no changes or additions to the administrative budget. All the changes are for program or capital. Now, I went through these before, but if anybody has any questions, I don't mind answering them now. Okay. And then here we show the savings. Again, this is exactly the same as it was presented in the preliminary budget, there are no changes. I just allocated between program capital and admin. The savings that we're realizing from increasing the revenues are not distributed between those three components, so that's why they're in that second to last column called undistributed. We're good with this? Okay, so that's the presentation. If anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them. No comments?
It's very easily understood, plain English. What more could you ask for?
Makes me nervous when there's not a lot of questions.
Well, I think, Linda, we'd all like to thank you on behalf of, I'm sure, the board and especially the administrative team. For a long time, one of the things that was frustrating was not being able to follow one presentation to the next, and that was the task Linda was given, and you've certainly done a great job. And it has made a world of difference, both for our understanding and also for how and also for how we operate as administrators to approaching the budget as well. So we all benefit, and the kids benefit.
Thank you. So-
Oh, you're gonna stay right up there?
I'm gonna stay right up here.
And do the-
All right.
Capital service, uh, reserve, rather, sorry.
So, um, the purpose for this presentation is just to discuss what a capital reserve is and also to provide information on our proposal to, proposal to establish one. As Mr. McGrath mentioned earlier, we do have some fund balance currently that's unassigned, meaning it's not dedicated for any one purpose. So what we would like to do is to move two million dollars of the fund balance that we currently have into a capital reserve. And that capital reserve would have a ten-year term. We would use it for capital renovations, probably for a district-wide roof project, but we could use it for anything that's identified in the building condition survey. The funding source would be from unassigned fund balance, and that would come from fund balance that we currently have. In order to add this, or to add this proposition to our May vote, the board does have to act on it before the first legal notice goes out, which would have to be done on March thirty-first. So we're hoping that there will be a discussion about this so that Debbie can get the information at the next board meeting. So a little bit about a capital reserve. Capital reserves are designed to help cover some of the cost of future capital projects. I'm not sure how much a, a district-wide roof project would cost, but if it, let's say it would cost five million dollars. If we have this two million in a reserve, then in the future, we only need to finance three million. Because the moment that the voters approved a capital project for the roof project, we would move that two million into capital project fund right away. To establish a capital reserve, there must be a separate proposition on the May vote. And the proposition would state the specific purpose of the fund. That's why we were stating that would be district wa, or district capital projects and renovations, including but not limited to the roof project. The total funded amount, which is two million. The term is up to ten years. And the source of the funds would be the unassigned fund balance. The reserve would be funded at the same time as it's established. So if the voters approve this in May, we would actually move the money into a capital reserve the next day. And if for some reason in the future, we wanted to add to the reserve, we would have to have another vote. The voters would have to approve it every time we wanted to add money to the reserve. There is no limit on the amount that can go into the capital reserve. However, like I just stated, the dollar amount must be approved exactly. So anytime we would like to add to the reserve, we would have to have voter approval. If we wanted to have a reserve for another purpose as well, that would be a whole separate capital reserve on which the voters would have to approve as well. To use a capital project, the voters would have to vote and approve an actual capital project. And in that authorization, it would have to state how much funds, how much of the reserve we were using for that project and how much we would be expecting to finance. We can't use the funds for an emergency. We could never take them out until the voters approve it. And, um, excuse me, the, the use of the funds would be aidable. Currently, when we have a capital project, we usually finance the whole amount. And one of the ways that we talk about, we can sell it, is saying, well, we are gonna receive over fifty percent of the aid back on it. So we're justifying why we're financing. We can still receive aid even if we don't finance the capital project. We'll receive aid on it if we use the money from the capital reserve. So according to Jason from Bernie Donnigan's office, it's more bang for the buck. So that, I think, this is the last slide. Yep.
Yep.
Are there any questions?
Any questions? Anybody?
Yes. Linda?
Yes.
If there's a, it has to be approved. Proposition has to be approved for the two million.
Yes.
And you, you mentioned if you, if we come up, Elliot comes up with a project for a million dollars for something other than a roof line, that has to be approved again to spend that money?
Well, it would have to be approved to spend it no matter what.
Yes.
No matter what, you have to-
Needs voter approval in and out.
Needs voter approval for the project, yes.
Yeah, needs voter approval in and out.
Okay.
Originally, when I was talking to Chuck, I was saying we should just call it a capital reserve for a roof project. And he advised that we actually refer to the building condition survey. So if, if there is something else that comes up from the building condition survey, we could use the funds for that.
Yeah, I think, you just have to look at this. This is a, it's, it's a savings. It's, it's the ability to have some money put away for a rainy day fund when something comes up that, that, a capital project that, that we want to move on. And it, at that point, will have less impact on the taxes.
Right.
Right.
Does the vote for approval of the use of the money have to occur on the same day as the budget vote? As the formation of the, the fund has to be?
For, for using the funds?
The fund had to be authorized during, at the same time we authorized the budget vote?
To establish the reserve?
To establish the-
We'll do it, well, it's, it's the same time as the budget vote, but it's a separate proposition.
Right.
To use the funds, it could be any, any time, any time that we-
So, so if we had an emergency situation and we wanted to use the funds, we could have a separate vote at that time to authorize it?
Um, we could-
We wouldn't have to wait till the following year?
No. But it, it does have to be an approved capital project. We can't declare an emergency and remove the money from the fund.
But the nice part about the language that we were advised to use was improvements, including but not limited to district-wide roof project. And they said, as long as we attach it to something in our building condition survey. So they said, make the language as broad as possible. We originally selected roofs out of the building condition survey, knowing that, you know, that's gonna happen. You, you know, we have two, well, at least, well, two buildings with slate roofs. That, three, three buildings. And other roofs that are in, you know, getting to the end-of-life expectancy. But they said, don't, don't lock yourself into the roofs because you may have something that, you know, comes up as a more critical need. So we, we thought we were going to be more restricted, and we found out we had greater latitude as long as we designate it and stay within our building condition survey and say, including but not limited to. So that was very refreshing because we originally thought we had to identify something, you know, from the building condition survey and then stick to that item. So when we originally started talking about this, we naturally went to the roofs because they are going to be a large ticket item to repair and/or replace. And you don't even need a building condition survey to know that slate roofs, after seventy years, something's gotta happen. So, not to mention the other roofs are-
Right. We all know that roofs need replacing.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, the attorney already wrote a sample resolution. And in that, he, he wrote that it would be used for projects identified in the building condition survey. He didn't mention the roof project at all.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
In the event that the voters don't approve for these two million dollars to be allotted into this capital little fund, what happens to the two million dollars, then?
Well, that's a very good question. We originally had the, we're gonna propose a term of five years, and we were advised against that. The voters have to approve a capital project within the term period. So we don't have to spend the money in ten years, but we do have to have the approval. The reason why it's advantageous to have a more broad term or broad description of the project is if one does get turned down, then we can go out for another vote on a different type of project and still be able to use the funds. If eventually it was never approved, we would then have to get approval from the voters to do, to move it back to the general fund, fund balance.
Okay, so another vote can be held at another time. If it doesn't get passed this time and put in the fund, we can-
Yeah.
Try again.
Yes, we can keep this money for ten years in the capital reserve.
Okay, thank you.
We can, we can actually, we keep it until the vote is approved.
But I, I think the question is, is what happens? So this, this is money that we have available now to be able to fund the reserve.
Yes.
If, if it's approved by the voters.
Yes.
If it's not approved by the voters, what happens to that money?
It's currently in general fund, and it would stay there. It's unassigned fund balance.
So we just couldn't use it? We couldn't touch it until?
Well, right now, we could use it, um, for-
Use it to offset the tax levy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we okay? Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good idea. That's mine. You gotta maintain your buildings.
Have to go out? Okay. We'll, we'll have to do that. Okay. At this time, and thank you for your patience for all these reports, may I have a motion for public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. We're now have, we're in public participation. Anybody would like to address the board?
Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, one.
Come on. Steve, you always look good.
Good evening, Steve Hughes. First of all, I just want to compliment, Ms. Steinberg on the presentation. It was very refreshing to be able to understand how money was being transferred among the line items. And I'd like to offer channel twenty-two and/or my services, the videographer, if you want to put out some kind of presentation on both either the capital reserve or the budget itself. Thank you.
Another fireside chat? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else? Sure. You sat through our presentation. We should hear you out.
I should come to more meetings because I'm really blown away by what I saw tonight. I work in a school, at Arlington High School, and really, I feel like we're in very good hands, and I'm gonna come to more meetings. Tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about what I see as a problem compared to the amount of money that I'm seeing here. Mine is minor. To me, it's everything, though. So I'm Amy Drickele. My daughter, Erin, is over here. I have another daughter in the, in the middle school. We came from Regina Chaley. I am pleased as punch to be part of the public schools. I, I was really apprehensive about it, and I can't even tell you how, how wonderful everything's been. Three years ago, Erin was diagnosed as a type-one diabetic. My life changed completely. I'm not sure if people are familiar with that very briefly. It's not the diabetes that you get because you're not taking care of yourself. We have none of this on either side of her family, my husband or my family. It has changed our life completely. The reason I'm here today is to talk about the school nurses, not only to applaud them for their help with everything that my daughter deals with, but also a big concern. I feel that the situation is getting worse and worse with the school nursing, that they are pushed to the limit, that I'm fearful that we won't have care for people like Erin or just the everyday thing. You know, we started with our social workers, talking about the social and emotional care of children. It's, you know, needless to say, they, they did a great presentation to talk about that. And the school nurses, I think, are a big part of that as well. But the health concerns are really a fear of mine. So with Erin, and I think there's a diabetic in pretty much every school, I don't know. I know there's a bunch of them. And, and let me pause for a second. You know, I'm almost fifty years old. I'd never heard of type-one diabetes when I was a kid, peanut allergies, all sorts of different problems that we're dealing with today, and it's increasing. We don't know why. There's a lot of research going on. Hopefully, this will turn around with, with her condition. Erin has to test her blood sugar. Love that I'm talking about. Every time she eats, if there's a snack at every meal. I wake up at two-thirty in the morning, I have to get up at five, and again at midnight. So every couple of hours, I have to check her blood sugar. Normal for all of us is between eighty and about one-twenty. If you go above four hundred, you can start thinking about issues with brain damage. If you go below fifty, forty, a person can just drop, and, you know, immediate actions have to be taken, or they could die. So without that testing, you know, there is a, a critical situation. Much to my surprise, last Monday, I got a call from the school saying, "We're really sorry, we don't have a nurse in school." I was shocked and thought, you know, what's gonna happen? Of course, I would take the day off and pull Erin from school. You know, we're talking about kids leaving because of air quality. I mean, this is just mind-blowing that we wouldn't have healthcare for this, this child and all the other children. There's kids with catheters and wheelchairs and, and like I say, all these critical allergies going on. So Aviva has been wonderful in explaining to me some of the temporary measures that the school is, or the district is looking at, including making subnursing more appealing by raising the pay, potentially having a subnurse who would be full-time and be able to sub different places if nurses are out. And what I would like to do is have that conversation, a public conversation, about not making that, no pun intended, a Band-Aid here, but making this a more permanent situation. The nurses, some of whom are here today, are just pushed to the nth degree, and I don't see this getting any better. And I don't think a temporary measure is what's needed. Yes, we had a couple nurses out with the flu or other private matters, but to get a call and hear that my daughter wouldn't have care, and it was remedied by taking a nurse out of another school and giving them to North Park Elementary. But it turns out that there's a diabetic in that school, and why one family's needs outweigh the other. That child went without a school nurse that day. This is terribly disturbing to me, so I hope you all agree. And continue this conversation to see what we can do in the future. This is not an appealing job for nurses when you can go to a hospital and make easily double the pay, have more schedule flexibility. These ladies are not just doing what we used to know as school nursing. They're dealing with hungry kids, poor kids, dirty kids, incontinent kids, diabetic kids. And I can go on and on. So I'm hoping that you'll listen to this. I'm hoping that we could put a little face on, and this is actual people who are missing out. If she had an emergency, which she's had about four or five times where we had to take immediate action, I would say over the last six months, if that happened in school and there was no one to take care of her, I'm regretfully saying that, you know, there would be a very expensive problem, not only to her health, but, you know, we all want to make sure that kids are safe and, and not have any kind of legal ramifications. So that's my piece. If you have any questions, I'm happy to speak about it.
Thank you. The way we work it here is you get to present to the board, then we close public participation, and then we answer if we can, depending on what the question is, the person, the person's up. And then we have a second public participation later in, if you wanna. Let's just see how it goes.
Okay.
If, um, if it's necessary, we could have a one-to-one meeting, and we can discuss this also.
Sure thing.
All right?
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Can I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. All right. So I think it would be more appropriate for you to-
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for sharing, and we're happy you're both here. Just a couple of general things, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Aviva. One is, thank you for complimenting our nurses. We think very highly of them as well. Two, there's a nurse shortage everywhere, hospitals, schools. So we are being impacted the same way everybody else is. It's just, there's an industry standard shortage in nursing, and I think that's been pretty widely publicized. With that said, the needs of our, our students are our number-one priority. And we have already started to put together plans to say, well, what, what can we do? What can we do about this situation? And we know there's a temporary plan, and we know we need a, a better solution to a long-term plan. And so we're putting the paint on the wall. We'll be recommending, as you said, and I did give the board a heads-up, we will be- We will be, on tonight's agenda, we're raising the subnurse's pay so that we're more competitive in the area. We are going to look at hiring a permanent subnurse for the remainder of the year. And again, you know, that may not solve anything. If you've got six nurses and three of them all have an illness or a family crisis, I can't guarantee that even with a permanent sub on the roster that we won't be faced with the situation again. So we need to be really realistic about how we look at it. We know right now that, I have a sister-in-law with type 1 diabetes. So we know right now our number-one priority is to provide an RN at all times for your daughter. And so that may mean that one of our schools where we have two nurses is shorthanded for a day. That is not ideal. That's certainly not by choice. I really want to emphasize that the sub shortage is certainly nothing that, you know, any hospital, any facility does by choice. So we're looking at a number of different avenues, everything from what are the agencies that provide emergency services for substitute nurses. We're looking, we've looked at a few. We need to keep looking further at that. So I guess the long and the short of it, and I'll turn it over to Aviva, is we are starting the process now to deal with, what do we do in the immediate future? And then let's put the paint on the wall. What would be a permanent solution? But our guarantee right now is that we know the children that we have in the district that are considered fragile and high need, high medical need, and they are our highest priority. So in any given situation where we're short, we know that that is the highest priority, and that you have our guarantee. And Aviva, I don't know if you have more to add to that?
No, I think, you know, you did a great job, and I think you said everything I'd want to say. The only thing I want to say, just, you know, to ease your mind a little, is that the decision to move the nurse from the other building was one I made because there is a very well-trained one-to-one aide with that other diabetic student. So that, you know, just so that you and the public are not worried that we had the exact same situation and just moved someone. It wasn't great, and there were extra people like myself in that building at that time, but if that eases your mind a little bit. And then, and again, thank you, Greer. And we are looking at, you know, we have a temporary solution for this year, and we are looking at better long-term solutions.
I'm going to ask the board's indulgence if you do have a question right now, if you would like to ask it.
Thank you. I just want to say that I understand the nursing shortage all over my husband.
Oh, could you speak at the, like, that way?
Eland, here is it?
My husband is a nurse. We understand the nursing shortage. I'm a guidance counselor. I understand what it takes to help children to the best of my ability. Every situation is different. I don't want my daughter to have to have an aide. That child's aide shouldn't, she's not allowed to touch any medication. The child, who I think is eight, happens to be a friend of mine, you know, was left with this person who couldn't dispense insulin. You know, she was under supervision. And I also know that there's a rule that says you don't have to have a nurse in any building, which is archaic, and that needs to be changed. That's just crazy with what we're dealing with. You know, if, again, my two cents is, yes, there's a nursing shortage in hospitals, but there's a myriad of nurses who can lean over and help that patient or this patient. When this kid is left without a nurse, she can drop, and she can die. And I want you all to hear that, because it's not about taking it from one situation to another. This is about not having care for her. And it's pretty dramatic, but I don't mean to be all emotional. You know, I've had to deal with this myself, but it's really important, not just for my daughter. This is just one face of hundreds of other kids. And not to mention, like I say, I think the really important thing about the permanent decision or the permanent change is to give the nurses some sort of relief.
Yes.
They cannot, even when they're in their position, they can't maintain the level of care that they're giving. Wouldn't it be ideal if we did have a permanent float nurse so that our nurses can get back into doing less paperwork, even if they have a full staff? Maybe give classroom presentations about good health habits so that we can keep these kids in the classroom, so that they can, you know, be there and learn. That's the bottom line. So thank you again for listening. I appreciate it.
You're most welcome. Okay. I don't think we had to answer Steve on anything other than say, we're glad you understood.
I think we just should appreciate Steve's offer for the video.
It's been an effective tool in the past, and I'd certainly like to take him up on it if I've got some partners. I don't know if there's a board member that would want to be part of it.
Doug looks good on video.
Distinguished is the word.
Yeah.
Seasoned.
Then I have one of those senior moments, and I go, "Okay, all right." Okay, we're at board discussion. Is there any new news for the district?
Not since the last meeting, no.
Not since the last meeting? Okay. I would like to bring up at this time, only because we did at the end of the meeting last year, the fact that there are packets available for people who want to run for the board, and that they can be picked up by here from the district clerk. And the point of that is because Mr. Sheehan, after many, many, many years of service, is not running. So we do need at least one.
Yeah, as I had said the last time, you know, and I keep making the announcement because, you know, it's only one meeting last time, and if it's not heard that time and missed on TV, you know, I, you know, remind people again. I think I'd announced it earlier in the year, the school year, that I would not be seeking reelection so that I could give people the opportunity, if they were thinking about it, and not just assume that it was going to be the same-old, same-old coming forward. So I really do encourage, you know, somebody or anybody who would like to get involved, and they can certainly reach out to me if you'd like to get my take on school board service, but I do want to encourage people to consider running.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just add to that. Unfortunately, it looks like I won't be running for reelection myself either.
So there'll be two.
And there's three seats available.
Can I just say I'm disappointed? I know why Kevin is leaving. I was hoping you would reconsider, but, because you had very valuable input over the term on the board.
It's not over yet. I just wanted, I don't want to shock you in a couple weeks.
Well...
Yeah, that was, you know, as I said, that was my point in making the announcement early, too, because the tradition, maybe it happens in all schools, particularly Hyde Park. People just kind of lay around, don't do anything, and then they realize, they just assume that people are going to run again, so why get involved? But making it very, so then there's a nasty surprise when the petitions come in, and there's only potentially one candidate running because everybody thought the other two are running.
Yeah, one of the benefits of having a very stable board without a lot of controversy is that that happens. People say, "Oh, they're going to keep going."
Yeah, it's actually the disadvantage of stability and, yeah, so...
There's a lot of experience. They've been here a long time, so...
Well, while we're on the subject, I think if you do become a crisis without having enough candidates, the board should consider, and I don't know how to go about it, reducing the size of the board from seven to five. There's other districts that have that.
That's true. Yeah, yeah, it is a consideration. I would like to give people an opportunity to actually join the board. I think I would like to see more diversity on the board. I would like to see a woman on the board. I would, you know, if we just reduce it to five, it's the five of us who've been here forever, so it's like... But, yeah, that could be an option.
Unless you get a voter out.
Yeah, all right. Okay. All right, so...
I'm going to want to talk about the voter exit poll.
Yep. So that moves us to the voter exit poll, and who wanted to speak about it?
Yeah, I do want to, I know that we like and we have utilized the voter exit poll, but I don't know if people recall when we first started to look at this. They really advised that you use this sparingly. And we now have three years' worth of data from our exit poll. Doug added a good question last year about the concerts. I think we are still utilizing the results, and they haven't really changed very much over the last three years. We haven't really done, you know, a lot of significant analysis, and I just, I don't want, I guess I would advise that maybe we consider the literature out there about exit polls, to use them sparingly, you know, when you need them for specific purposes. It is a cost to the district to man the booth, if you will, and I'm not sure... So I'm not trying to dissuade you if we have some new questions to ask, but we're really not engaged in a year-by-year comparative. What we do have is that our results on the exit poll survey are pretty consistent, and the numbers of people filling them out. So I just don't know if we just do it because we've continued to do it or if we have a new purpose for conducting the exit poll. I think we got a lot of information about who were our voters, what they supported. And I just don't want to do it just for the sake of doing it, because it is an expense to the district.
Okay. I'd like to say something about that. Wouldn't it be possible for potentially students to man this booth? Or would that be, is there rules, regulation against that type of thing? So therefore, it wouldn't be an expense, and you have the student government or the NHS students manning it, therefore, no expense?
I guess we'd have to ask the district clerk. Debbie?
We could do that, and that's something that some other districts do use students for that purpose. And that's, it's just been, if I can speak about my experience in seeing what's happened with the exit poll, it's difficult sometimes to get people to want, just to complete it. Every time that I've been out there, the people who have been manning that section, I don't want to say they're fighting to get people to answer it, but it is a struggle at times.
Well, it should be completely, completely voluntary. That's given. The other thing that confuses voters is, but it is part of the exit poll survey. The first thing they ask is, "Why do they want to know how I voted? I just voted." But it is, it is a way of saying, "Now we know you voted yes or no," attached to demographics or interests or things like that. So, yes, we could consider having students do that, knowing that, you know, we'd have to provide a little training because we do see some people want to ask questions or, you know, the training wouldn't be a problem. I just am concerned about what we're doing with the data and why.
Well, you know, my feeling about it is, they do have their place, but, you know, when you look at really the last, I don't know, five, six, seven years of voting here, there really haven't been any nasty surprises. I mean, you know, things have passed fairly handily. You know, technically, the board's not supposed to advocate for the budget, but we don't adopt a budget and expect it to go down in flames. We expect and hope that it's passed. I don't, you know, and because, you know, I mean, if it passes by, now, granted, it's a little bit of a concern if it passes by three votes versus 300 votes or, you know, 1,000 votes, but the reality is, if it passes, it passes. It really, what's the, you know, what are you really getting from the information? Because you accomplished what we set out to do. We got a budget passed, and we can function for the next year, you know, and keep growing. So I don't know. I just, I don't know if I see the value in it. For the effort that has to be put in it, and if we're not going to use the information...
Yeah, I guess that's part of my point. What would the fourth year of the same data do for us? The other thing is, I don't want to lose the ability that when we have a real desire or need to do an exit poll, people say, "Oh, I fill one out every year. It's the same questions," you know. So, and I don't know if maybe Debbie can supply. Remember when we first did the exit poll, you had some information that we shared with the board about the purposes of an exit poll? What are some of the good uses of an exit poll? So I don't, I don't want to just shut it down based on, you know, my word, but maybe we could take a look at some of the literature or take a pause and say, as I said before, you know, what are we doing with it and why, and what will this fourth year of the data? But then we should hear from the rest of the board members, because maybe there is some thought about changing it and getting new information. And I think you have to be clear about what information you want and why.
Yeah, I know that I've been an advocate for it since its inception, and as I look through it tonight, first thing that comes to me is, too many questions. You know, I think we need to take another look at it, redesign it. I think it's important to have, and I am not a statistician, but the idea of having a few standard questions that you ask year after year helps you to understand your demographics and who's taking, who's taking the survey. And then to have a couple of variable questions that you ask that may be hot topics, you know. And it could be, it could relate to capital projects. It could relate to curriculum. It could, you know, if there's something, something specific that we're trying to get to, the last couple of questions could give us answers there. Where the first, help us to understand
The voter.
Who the voter is, who it is, so you can start to see why people react the way they do. I mean, I would be willing to, if we wanted to take a look at, you know, the, again, review why we do it and what is it that we're doing. And it may be time. It may be time just to put a pause on it and wait a year or two, and... But I would hate to do that without at least taking a little look at it.
And the last way we did that was three board members, I think it was three board members got together.
Pretty much, Perry and I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's, I think in this case, this is one of the things you definitely don't want. I want, it needs to cover the board.
We could go...
Yeah, I think, look at what the questions are. I mean, we've got 13 questions.
Right.
You know, maybe, you know, we may want to do half that, just make it easier for people to get through quickly.
And I like the idea of students, if we do it again, so...
Okay. Whenever you have time.
I was thinking, maybe if Deb could pull, Debbie, could you pull together some of the information that we'd looked at in the past, the benefits, so we can refocus as to why we're doing it?
You good to do it again?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I already volunteered in my last week.
Oh, you already, see? Okay.
That's great.
That brings us to unfinished business. Second consideration of policies. 1800, 8334, 8700, all right. That 1800 is donations, gifts, and grants to the district. 3334, use of district credit cards. And 8700, policy on insurance. May I have a motion for a second consideration?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. Can I motion for 9.2, deletion of policy 6625? The information is already included in the policies we just approved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. Can I have a motion for 9.3? Increased rate of pay for school nurse substitutes.
So moved.
Any discussion? You want to add anything into that?
Just as one very small step and a long way to go.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Brings us to action on the consent agenda. May I have a motion for 10.1, the consent... May I have a motion for 10.1, the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yes. I would like to acknowledge Danielle, who's here tonight.
Oh, that's right.
Danielle Elliott, who is moving to a position in the business office, a full-time position as the, what?
Accounts payable.
Accounts payable clerk. Sorry, I didn't look it up ahead of time. So, welcome to the business office. We're thrilled to have you. Elliott's loss in the back of the house is our gain, but we know that, you know, you're on your trajectory, you're in college, building your career and this is a great step in that direction and so, best of luck and as soon as they vote, we'll.
And remember, your goal is to be your mom's boss.
In the next decade. In the next decade.
That's right.
She's getting there.
Okay.
Elliott, who's going to fix the unit bed ledgers now?
We didn't vote yet. So, all in favor of that, please?
We're sitting on opposite sides.
And opposed? Thank you. That brings us down to special ed. May I have a motion for 11.1, special education placements?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, Dan?
I've reviewed the packet and recommend its adoption as presented.
Thank you.
And I'm just going to jump in on that, just as a follow-up from a month ago on February 11th, there were just a couple of questions about the finances in the presentation and we talked about it at the subcommittee meeting. And so, for anyone who was, still had that question in their mind, it, the, what we had is the number of students in out-of-district placements on one slide and then the next slide had the cost of those students at BOSIs and the cost of those students at private schools. And when you add those numbers together, that came out to be correct. It's just that if you were looking only at BOSIs for those students, that the numbers were not adding up right. So, I just wanted to add that and that we, to make things simpler, the whole presentation will be posted on the People's Services website with a little note on that slide so that people can make that connection.
And the object lesson is that if you have a phone and have a calculator on it and you start dumping numbers in it, you ask questions that aren't quite specific enough. So, that's where that question came from was because my calculator said something other than what was on it. But I did attend the special ed meeting. I thought it was really interesting. I'd never been to one before and it was a lot of things I didn't understand and some things that made sense and some things that, you know.
We're here to answer those questions. Doug can invite you aboard.
I appreciate what you do, Dan. I really appreciate more what you've done over these years because there's a lot of stuff there, a lot of stuff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brings us to 11.2. May I have a motion?
We have to vote.
Oh, didn't we take the vote yet?
No.
I'm sorry. All in favor? Oppose? Okay, thank you. I almost got through a meeting without, you know, I'm pretty close.
You're so close to perfect every week.
Practically perfect.
Mary Poppins would say.
You saw the play.
Now, may I have a motion for 11.2, volunteer coaches?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. May I have a motion for 11.3, amending consultant agreements?
So moved.
Listed in the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion there? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And we're back to public participation. You even get another shot at us if you want, but Mr. Hughes might. Can I have a motion for public participation?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Would anybody else like to address the board? Okay, may I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. So, are there any other matters that we didn't talk about already that the board deems necessary? All right, subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports from, since the last meeting? I don't think we've had any committee meetings.
We had the special ed committee meeting.
Well, the special ed, yeah, yeah. We just talked about that, though.
Yeah.
Kind of. Okay. Brings us to upcoming meetings. Okay, Friday, March 11th, 7:00 PM, that would be this Friday, the Spring Musical at the high school. Saturday, March 12th, also at 7:00 PM, the Spring Musical at Mary Poppins at the high school. Sunday, March 13th, at 2:00 PM, the final Spring Musical presentation and also at FDR. Monday, March 14th, 6:30 PM, Common Core Learning Standards Spring Test Administration Meeting.
Yeah, the actual flyer is the New York, changes in the three-through-eight testing for 2016. It's parent information meeting.
Right, and it's here, it's here at the district office, in this room. March 21st to the 25th is spring recess. Let's hear it.
Yay.
And Monday, April 11th, at 6:30 PM at the Wallace Center, is a film and discussion Most Likely to Succeed.
Just noted, we did not have our next board meeting listed on here, though.
Are we skipping?
We are? Perfect. Don't have to ask me twice.
Oh, yes. There were so many on there that we.
So, March, it's March 31st, right?
Yep.
Obviously, because of spring break, we're skipping a week because of, right.
There's also a policy meeting Monday at 1:00.
That is also correct.
And just a reminder, there is, meet the Regent, Judah Johnson, on April 7th at Arlington High School Library.
That's correct. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Cora, when's the next technology meeting? Is it before the end of the month?
It is the 28th.
So, it's before the next board meeting?
Yes.
So, we should mention it now.
The Monday of that meeting. Good idea. Yes. So, the Technology Committee is meeting at its regular time on Monday, the 28th of March. And then, we're actually scheduling a full-day meeting in April as well because we just can't stop talking and there's so much to do.
We just don't shut up.
But it's very productive.
Because there's a lot of good things happening in technology, yeah.
Exactly. We need several full days.
Okay. There is no need for a second executive session, so may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for coming.